If you spread it out in a subdivision. So, it's possible they bring it up to six units per acre and now we're probably looking at something more like a, an affordable housing district.
Right.
In terms of density, at least what we're familiar with in terms of what's been proposed.
Oh, well, I just want to say, and to your point about R-10, R-12, Gateway, Gateway is its own thing, you know? So, it really is up to the Planning Commission to talk about where that district is supposed to be going, what direction it's going to be taking.
Mr. Goshel, I guess we have to decide what is in front of us right now. They have not, in my opinion, done any commercial, they, no permits. And that should be a great concern of this commission. We can't keep giving and getting nothing in return. There are no guarantees on this large commercial development.
Any other final thoughts from commission members? Questions for Mr. Gaisel? Questions for our ex officio? Final discussion. Okay, so, we're looking to start the crafting of a motion.
I would just say, so while we would, we encourage the commercial development and would certainly love to see East Society Road be constructed and connected, unfortunately, you know, I'm not sure if I'm going to articulate this the way I want to, but it's unfortunate that it has to come down to the construction of four buildings that, that require, that are required to construct and connect East Society Road as it exists to 161. And run the risk of the commercial one not coming. It's also unfortunate, on the other hand of the coin, to run the risk of the commercial not coming because the four units, or four buildings aren't constructed. So, it's a dilemma for this town. Planning Commission anyway, at least for me. And as much as I would encourage the developer to pursue construction of that road, maybe it's just best suited to reapply.
Is that some?
After the commercial development moves, begins moving forward. Or, maybe, I think it might be prudent to advise the zoning commission that should they approve the additional 120 units, that certain, I guess, certain, certain things happen, that they have to be cognizant of, that we end up with, you know, do we end up with a Costco and, or not, you know? I don't know how the zoning would ensure, other than the regulation proposes, okay, they're going to construct it.
And I would stop there, and I would let zoning figure out how they want to deal with it.
Yeah.
But our, our primary objective tonight is simply to weigh this text amendment against the plan of conservation and development.
Correct.
And, and file the best report that we can for zoning to factor into their decision, which will be binding.
Correct. So, I think if zoning were to approve it, I, I, the takeaway is that they ensure that the commercial development come, and somehow.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
That they ensure that the commercial development come to town, be, be, happen.
How?
I don't know.
Well, again, and that's where.
Can't, you know, there's no guarantees.
Right. Can I just also add one other thing? That their conversation with Simon Kornover, if I'm pronouncing the name correctly, has described this commercial section as, it's going to be modeled after the Evergreen Wall in wherever that, I don't remember where it is, up in Connecticut. Where is it?
South Bend.
There, thank you. But that was, that's their plan of whomever is building this, their design is going to be like the Evergreen Wall. I mean, if that's the case, I would say that we would be very lucky because it is beautiful. But, I, you know, somebody doesn't believe something is coming, so I just don't know who that someone is.
And I, and again, you know, considering the development that we do have in place, you know, I think we had looked at that prior, and the, the proposed units, as compared to the master plan, the residential units were a mix of townhomes, condominium style, I guess if you want to call it that.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, there was like.
That was their original?
The, the concept plan was two families and condominium style housing with, with some apartment buildings with more units, you know? So, it was kind of a random mix, rather than apartments in one building of two and three bedroom units. In addition to that, that those residential units actually shifted to the west, and geographic location pretty significantly. So, I can certainly, you know, to me, that raises a red flag and says, wait a minute, well, and I think this, this commission did comment back to zoning on that change, location change for some, I recall, I don't know if anybody recalls, no? Maybe I'm getting confused with wetlands. Being, you know, different than what was originally proposed.
And I think that there's a theme there, from the P O C D, which goes back to the turn of the century, talking about a hotel conference center and casinos and all that, to a residential condo ownership structure, to a residential apartment structure, to where we are today, which is a second phase of residential development. Which we're told is a prerequisite for a road to a prospective Costco.
And I, I would also point out too, that, you know, again, although you look at the cost of services and the question is whether that weighs out, I would just, you know, indicate that their estimates don't include personal property, or the infrastructure, what they're going to pay for water and sewer, and, and that revenue that will come into the town. And again, you know, some of that's just a one time, and then a smaller reoccurring fee, you know, on the water end of it. Yeah, but again, what, what's the cost of the town? I imagine we recoup that, so. Yeah, I don't know.
I have one more comment, Mr. Goshel. With the cutbacks in the state, would it even happen with these new ramps? There's too many unknowns. This state is cutting back tremendously, and that would cost the taxpayers a great deal of money. And no permits have been pulled, so the state is not going to do anything. Too many unknowns.
All I can say is I, I do, you know, I sat in a meeting with D O T in Newington.
When was that?
Approximately two months ago.
They're coming back. They're coming back on everything.
So, you know, having sat in that meeting with our town engineer, our deputy director of public works, and Mr. Mulholland, I mean, D O T, they've indicated if Costco is to get built, these ramps and this relocation of the ramps will occur, and that D O T is making this a number one priority in southeastern Connecticut. And, you know, you're looking at a 50 to 70 million dollar project.
I've heard that, I don't know how many times, but we still have the missing link
Of the commercial.
Of appropriate access to the commercial through the piece of property that isn't owned yet.
Important to note, right? Ownership has changed since these memos were written.
I think we need to go to each other.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're all in agreement about which way it goes, but close to having something.
Well, let's take a crack at it, and we can have some discussion.
I took a lot of notes and it's going to ramble, but be ready to delete and I'll put numbers on it.
Okay.
If, if I'm invited to motion.
Yes.
Cordially.
Enthusiastic.
And I'll just, while Frank is organizing, I'll just reiterate where we are with the zoning referral findings, okay? Proposed changes in zoning regs shall be referred to the Planning Commission for a report that shall contain the findings of the Planning Commission on a consistency of a proposed regulation or boundaries change with the plan of development, and any other recommendations the Planning Commission deems relevant. So, any findings? I, I guess the finding is, is the, is explicitly saying whether it's consistent or inconsistent, and then.
But you.
We also can add any other recommendations, Planning Commission.
Just note, you make a determination if it's consistent, I can say, yeah, it's inconsistent. The question is why?
Yes.
Be specific as to why. Or you say it's consistent, be specific as to why it's consistent. I think we do a pretty good job of that by sliding sections of the P O C D.
Yep.
Mr. Gaisel, I don't know if you gave us any words, but I could string something together from the application, I guess.
I, I did not draft anything specific, because I, just lack of time and. I, what I would point to is my last memo to the commission in 2012, so just boilerplate language.
But that was A-24, yeah.
That was A-24. But I usually use that typical boilerplate language, even with.
You're giving away your secrets, Gary. I miss a good word.
A motion that the Planning Commission find, Planning Commission for the town of East Lime exercising its authority and having reviewed the proposal, the application of Theodore A. Harris for G D E L Residential B L L C, an application for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regulation, section 11, point A, point nine, point two, point two, Charlie, to increase the number of units from 280 to 400. The change to the Gateway Master Development Plan in the zoning regulations, that the commission, having reviewed that as required by Connecticut general statute eight dash three alpha, commission finds the application inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development, as amended for the following reasons. One, objective 1.2 of the P O C D established a coordinated cooperative system of land use decision making, and objective 1.2 associated policy, which states specifically maintaining property values, minimizing the impact of new development on existing land uses, and in particular, limiting the growth of municipal service and maintenance costs. Number two, objective 2.1. To promote compatible and sustainable economic development. Policy to promote compatible business in appropriate locations to foster local employment and opportunities, a favorable tax base, the provision of goods and services for local residents, and a year-round and seasonal economy that improves the overall quality of life for East Lime residents. Number three, objective 7.1. To provide for the safe, convenient, and efficient movement of people and goods through and within the town by developing a planned transportation system, which serves local traffic through traffic and pedestrian movement, while ensuring the preservation of community character. Without a clear plan, and these are my words, these are the commission's words on top of that objective, without a clear plan, that the originally proposed access road north of the transformer station on Flanders Road will be constructed, this plan clearly fails to meet objective 7.1. Even if the road were constructed in the original location, a traffic study might be necessary in order to determine consistency with objective 7.1. And four. The application fails to move forward in a timely fashion on the goals and recommendations of chapter three, land use, section 3.2, commercial, specifically page 67, paragraph one, channel future commercial growth toward the Route 161, I-95 interchange area. Commission adds the following comments. One, the Planning Commission concurs with the findings of the Planning Commission's zoning commission from eight years ago, that 280 residential units provided an adequate ratio of residential to commercial development, so that the venture would be a financial benefit to both the town and the developer. When the ratio becomes lopsided in favor of residential, any benefit to the town is mathematically eroded and in fact becomes a deficit. Number two, further eroding the financial value of the Gateway development to the town would be the fact that the developer has not attained a position where they control the property on which many of the hypothetical junior stores would be built. Any subsequent developer will lose the economies of scale provided to the current developer in the originally envisioned development of the Gateway District. Number three, if this approval, if this application is approved, any new units should be limited firmly to two-bedroom units, including any den in the new units. Number four, the Planning Commission acknowledges that the developer has invested a significant amount in infrastructure. However, it appears that the most basic investment in infrastructure was never accomplished, that being the purchase of the land upon which the originally proposed access, access road was to be built. Number five, the developer should be compelled to apply infrastructure investment resources into the connecting road as required by East Lime zoning regulations, 11, point A, point four, point two, preferably using the originally proposed access on land north of the transformer station on Flanders Road, Route 161. Number six, the zoning commission should solicit actual student population numbers from the East Lime School District. Number seven, the area now known as the Gateway District was formerly zoned light, light industrial. The intensification of residential development runs contrary to the mixed use intended by the P O C D for this area. Number eight, the Planning Commission contends that there should be no doubt in anybody's mind that the reason the Gateway District was permitted as a change to our zoning regulations was to permit increased commercial development in the Route 161, I-95 interchange area. We should strive to achieve that first. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Excellent. We have a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
Can I make one comment?
Yep, we're going to go to discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Rita.
The only thing, I mean, Frank, I don't know how you get to do all that, it's amazing to me always. I don't, I don't agree with the part of the, limiting it to two bedrooms. I think the, having the third bedroom and/or room and/or den, whatever, is an important factor to the developer, to the homeowner, or the, it just gives them more space.
I concur. Maybe we would make an amendment to consider a limit on the size, just, they don't have to do any of the stuff we say, it's just something that, at the very least sends a message that the.
Yeah, maybe we.
What the heck?
Maybe we could change that to, we recommend that dens be called bedrooms.
It's not even so much an issue, I mean, we, we know that that's what it is, but if they, to them, it would be more advantageous for them to sell it as a three-bedroom, because it's more money. To sell it as a den, it only gives them an access of, you know.
I, I just see it as being a, 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 it lack, that, the word den being introduced into the discourse just muddies the water.
It does.
So, I would prefer to just talk about.
Three bedrooms?
Units, units, and then numbers of bedrooms.
Right.
You know, those are the, that's, that makes, I'm an architect, that's what makes sense to me.
It does.
They're not selling, they're renting.
Thank you, yep.
Yes, you're right, sorry.
And we're not, we need to, to go back to the basic. We need commercial to offset, and that is not being done, so, let's. The regulation, they're asking for more units, whether they're two, three, one-bedroom, they need to get the commercial, bottom line.
I'm not changing that, I agree with you.
So, the, the, do we need to, I guess the discussion is, and I don't know, I feel like I'm dominating too much, but do we, do we just get rid of it, or do we point it out? I mean, people talk about that as an issue.
Pointed out.
People at this table did, that's why I put it there.
Right.
Yes.
That's right.
And, and they don't have to adopt this, it just, if they do adopt it, it might be something they do consider.
Right.
I don't feel that strongly either way, I'm with you on the, it's all about the commercial.
It is, that's the commercial.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, we just need to get the commercial one. Too good faith, to quote your words. I don't see good faith, right now, and I'm dealing with what's in front of me, good faith is not here, by the developer.
I could, I would support Frank amending his motion to just strike that line from it.
Just, that'll be paragraph number three, and I can put that on a list of things to do, unless, I don't know, Francine, and any, do we want to keep that in there?
I, I feel, I mean, there was that part about if it was not with bedrooms, and that would kind of also be, you know, the economic.
Because you lived through this last time, I'm just wondering if there's any little acorn rolling around in there that.
Not at the moment.
I know.
I, I hesitate to, to say it, only because we might be, and, it might be interpreted as doing zoning's job.
Right.
They can maybe make that distinction.
Yes, yes, okay.
So, I'd say maybe we just, we just cut it, and then Rita, it's not even in there.
I'll, I'll.
Um, I'm, I would rather that.
I'll consider amending my motion nicely.
Because I wouldn't want them to say, oh, wow, they.
They live in.
It was planning's idea to tie our hands and only we can build one, whole business model shot.
Right.
We don't have the expertise to do that, but clearly, they're going to, they're going to pick up our sensitivity about the, the impact on town services.
Mm-hmm.
Based on the quantities, and I think that comes through in the motion. So, Frank, if you'll amend your motion, striking.
You want to get, catch all of it in one?
Uh, no, you, I think Brooke's got it, and we can just strike.
Yeah.
Go, go at a time.
Item, comment three.
Very well.
And then, if you amend your second, oh, sorry, Joan, you amend your second.
A motion to, a motion to amend my former motion, striking paragraph three regarding size of units, and renumbering the follow-on units sequentially.
And Joan, do you amend your second?
I amend my second.
Very well, we've got a motion, do we have further discussion, any other points?
No, I'm fine.
I, as I read it, I thought, why the heck did I write that down, to solicit the real, the actual student population? Did we want the zoning commission, I mean, I would.
Yes, that's very important.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it.
Especially what we were presented with no date, where the figures came from.
Yeah.
We, we need.
Right, and I provided a.
Yeah, definite.
Element from the, a newspaper clipping, which is citing a fact that our town is spending X numbers, so I think certainly that line of communication with the Board of Ed is important. It's important.
It was important to this commission, so I think it's warranted.
I feel like I walked on Anne 17 times, so please say.
For Anne, right?
I feel like I've been interrupting you every time.
I agree.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Motion's unanimous, 6-0-0. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and your hard work on that, that was a big one. Okay, yep, we're going to, we're going to go into, we're going to take the rest of the agenda at a pace, I'm going to skip old business, Mr. Gaisel, unless you object. And under new business, there's two items. The first is that our Planning Commission is trying to explore a paperless future. In particular, letters that notify you of meetings coming to your house, is that, do, do the commission members feel like they are notified adequately via email, or should we keep the paper going?
No, you don't need it.
I know about these meetings via email, and I feel like we've talked enough. Okay, so, we're going to keep, Mr. Gaisel, please discuss that with our information technology and the team in the planning department downstairs, about whatever we can do while maintaining whatever the state statute requires in terms of keeping the paper, but moving in the direction of paperless. The second item under new business was that Kathy Wilson and Superintendent Newton are to be invited to our 20 October special meeting, and that's, I think, an exciting agenda item, and thank you, Roseanne, for helping to make those connections. I think it's part of our diligence as the Planning Commission to get a direct comment from what's going on at the schools, and a direct comment from what's going on at our senior services. Especially on the, as we're about to open a boardwalk downtown, which is going to have an impact on, hopefully, the schools and the seniors. Brings us to reports, as chairman, I'll pass our ex officio, Roseanne Hardy, thank you for joining us, thank you for your input earlier. Do you have anything you'd like to? It's a special meeting.
So, just whatever's on the agenda.
Well, I'm disappointed, but we'll hear from you next time. Okay, our zoning agendas, I'll be there Thursday, if anyone would like to join me.
I'll be there Thursday.
We videotaped the last one, so I don't think we need to go over it. Sustainable development and climate adaptation, Mr. Gaisel and Francine Schwartz, there has been movement there, right?
Yeah, I had a meeting today with Dr. Adam Mulchell from the Nature Conservancy.
Exciting.
It's exciting, we can start moving things forward.
Workshop ahead.
Workshop ahead, it wouldn't be until probably sometime in January.
Okay, what about, as town planner, do you have any comments or reports?
Not at this time.
Great, communications, anything?
Uh, no.
We've got some momentum, do I hear a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Rita, do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, wait, go ahead.
Further discussion. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Very well, thank you, everyone.
Good night, good night, thank you, thank you. Good night, good night. Thank you, thank you.
Awesome.